This conference will now be recorded.
I will call the meeting of January 21st. It's actually a Tuesday, this is Monday, to order and thank you everyone for braving the cold. Anyway, so Cleveland, call to order.
Councilmember Currier?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Hollinshead, here. Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
And councilmember Walchuck?
Here. And please rise for the point.
The flag of the United States of America. Into the holy court of states. Under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So entertain a motion to approve the minutes as printed. Of the agenda as printed.
We approve the agenda as printed.
Second, a motion made by Danny Mitchell, second by Carol Walchuck to approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? Cleveland?
Councilmember Currier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And councilmember Walchuck? Motion cue.
And I have one modification to the agenda. So I'm going to move on 10A. That's a pretty big film festival proclamation. And I'm moving it to 8A. So everything in H will move down. A will become B, C will become, B will become C, C will become D, D will become E. So I'll entertain, that's my motion.
Second.
So, any discussion, Cleveland?
Councilmember Hollinshead? Aye. Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Aye.
And councilmember Curry?
Aye.
Motion cue.
Thank you. Any additions, corrections to the notes of January 6, 2025?
Unfortunately.
They will stand as printed. We're down to public comment. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. And online comments will be taken after in-person comments are completed. And all comments should be directed to the council. Good evening.
Hello, council. My name is Michael Warner. I live at 9281 Nicholson Hill Road, way west on Nicholson Hill Road in Hubbard Lake. And I'm here to represent the Veterans Council of Alpena, again, to beg for money at the council. I represent the Marine Corps League. And I brought with me Joe Dembski. He is the DAV commander. He is all, he is going to have the control over the parades this year and the other events for the year. We rotate that each year. And so I'm here to beg for money again, for the help with the insurance that we're required to provide. So last year, I think it was approved for up to $700, and I'm asking for that again. And we got some real discounts this last year. I think it was only $176. What was the previous one was almost $400, if I recall right. And that's my spiel this year. So we have two parades we're going to do. We're going to do the Memorial Day Parade. It's basically a trooping of the colors from the county building to the Flanders Field. And I've spoken with city manager Smolinski about that. And then we're going to do the second one down Second Street again, where we end up right here at the City Hall. So that's the two parades. And hopefully we can get the first responders and police and fire people involved again, like we did this last fall. And that's all. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. And we will get that on our agenda. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? So we have no public hearing this evening. We're down to seven, the consent agenda. Bills to be allowed in the amount of $414,071.79. And authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign the warrant. B, budget amendment to request an increase for the professional and contractual budget in the assessors department in the amount of $36,599. For the residential and commercial and industrial inspections. C, approval of cemetery deed number 0317, by and between the city of Alpena and Dennis Oldog. I think that's how they say his name. And Helen Lidster in the amount of $750 for block 41, lot 124, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care. And authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign said deed. D, approval of the cemetery deed number 0318, by and between the city of Alpena and Michael and Cheryl Jakolski in the amount of $750 for block 41, lot 284, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care. And authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign said deed. E, approval of the cemetery deed number 0319, by and between the city of Alpena and Julie L. Affey in the amount of $750 for block 43, lot 107. For the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care. And authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign said deed. And F, approved change order number two for replacement of lead and lead-containing water services for Fair Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of $20,000. And authorize manager Smolinski, city clerk treasurer Soick, and city engineer Schultz to sign. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. I move that we approve that consent agenda as presented.
I second.
So a motion by Carol Walchuck to approve, second by Bridgette Hollinshead to... Any discussion? No discussion? Go ahead, Cleveland.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Aye.
Councilmember Currier?
Aye.
And councilmember Hollinshead? Aye. Motion cue.
Thank you, Cleveland. Now we're down to presentations. This is where we shifted our agenda. So the first one will be the proclamation for Thunder Bay Marine Sanctuary. So I read that. Whereas the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, conserve, and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values, and qualities of the national marine sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary, hopes to bring a larger ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of film to communicate ocean and Great Lakes issues and bring cultural events to Alpena and surrounding communities to inspire a shared vision of conservation of ocean and Great Lakes environments through stunning, sometimes controversial, and always conversation-starting films. And whereas the Great Lakes region, often considered the third coast, is a vital part of global waterways, thus making global issues our issues too. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival explores water issues through some of the most impressive oceans and Great Lakes films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities, and discussions with award-winning nationally-recognized filmmakers. Now therefore, I Cindy Johnson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 20, 2025, as Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week in the city of Alpena. So we have... Somebody get yourself first.
Oh. Surprise. Why do you think this? I'll get a couple. Okay. She knows. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Wednesday night in Rogers City, Thursday night in Harrisville, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we'll be here in Alpena. It's very fun here in Alpena. It's awesome. You're gonna feel like you traveled and collected a bunch of stories, but you get to sleep in your own bed. So.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Now we're down to the annual complex. And everybody brought their plans. Financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. From Chelsea McConnell from Stray Lamp and Transline is here. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Chelsea McConnell from Stray Lamp and Transline, and it's a pleasure to be here to present your fiscal year 2024 audit to you all. So just a little bit about an audit and what it is. So at the conclusion of an audit, the independent external auditor will express an opinion on whether the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. And your audit and your financial statements are required to comply with generally accepted accounting principles. And our audit is required to comply with generally accepted auditing standards as well as governmental auditing standards. And I always like to point out that although an audit is the highest level of an attestation engagement you can have for assurance purposes, it's still not absolute assurance. So a little bit about this annual comprehensive financial report that just continues to get more complex and, you know, lengthy every year. So we'll just kind of break down a little bit about the report design. So you have your introductory section, and that is actually considered other information. And the last section of the report, the statistical section, is also other information. So there's no assurance or opinion provided on that other information. Then you have your independent auditor's report, which is really the only few pages of this report that Stray Lamp and Transline, everything else within this report is the city's. Following that is management's discussion and analysis, or the MDNA. Now, the MDNA is considered required supplementary information, or also referred to as RSI. So the RSI is not required under generally accepted accounting principles. However, it is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, which your report also has to follow GASB standards as well. Following that, you have your basic financial statements. Within that section, you'll find your government-wide financial statements, your fund financial statements, and then your note disclosures to the financial statements. So the government-wide financial statements are on the full accrual basis of accounting, very similar to a private sector company. It includes all accruals, you know, your long-term debt, your capital assets. And that is much different from your fund financial statements, which is on the modified accrual basis of accounting. That basis of accounting really focuses on, you know, how money flows in and out and what's available for spending at the end of the fiscal year. And so you'll also find some reconciliations within that section that shows you the difference between the two sets of statements. Following that, you have the remaining portion of your required supplementary information, which is going to contain your budgetary comparison schedules, as well as your pension and other post-employment benefits, or OPEB schedules. And following that, you have supplementary information, which is your non-major governmental combining statements as well as individual fund statements. Now, I am pleased to say that the city was awarded the Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for the 30th year in a row. So that's a very prestigious award that the city gets, and Anna and Leland and everyone that works with them, they work really hard to get that award. It's a lot of work that goes into it. They can both attest to that. So the next thing I'm going to go over is a letter titled Communication With Those Charged With Governance, which is you, the board. Now this letter, if you're looking at the bound report, it's actually not bound into the report. So you'll find it loose leaf in there. So a couple important areas of this letter I like to point out is management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies, as well as all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. In addition, there are estimates that are reflected within your financial statements in order to comply with generally accepted accounting principles. It's, you have to make estimates of certain numbers within financial statements. So there's some numbers you could reconcile and know on any given day, such as cash. And then there's others that, you know, you have to come up with a reasonable estimate for. And some of those are considered significant estimates to your financial statements. So a couple of the most significant estimates reflected in these financial statements are depreciation, which is based on management's assumption of the useful life of your capital assets. And a couple of the very significant ones are your pension and your OPEB estimates, which you have your liabilities, and you also have deferred inflows and outflows related to both of those. There are so many assumptions that go into calculating those numbers. I mean, there's inflation, discount rates, wages, mortality rates, just to name a few. And then there's also the receivable in the water and sewer fund that is pertaining to a major customer where there's litigation going through. So those are, those could be very material numbers, and they could have a material impact. So they're considered significant estimates. So next, independent auditor.
Just have a quick...
Yes.
I had two loose leaf letters and...
There is another one. I am, so one is titled internal, so one is an internal control letter. And that one I'm going to talk about in, later in the presentation. And then the one that I just went over was titled Communication With Those Charged With Governance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the independent auditor's report can be found on pages 17 to 19, but I'm just going to highlight a couple of key areas of the opinion. So one, I am pleased to say you were issued an unmodified opinion, which means we do believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, and that is the highest level of an audit opinion you can receive. Now you hear auditors refer to materiality a lot, and that's really a concept that we use, and it changes from, you know, audit to audit. We also make various risk and internal control assessments, and then we plan and perform our audit. And during that, during our audit, we gather audit evidence that is sufficient and appropriate for us to base our opinion on. So the level of audit evidence we need can vary based on those internal control risks and materiality, and, you know, if something's a significant estimate. And so there's certain areas where we need to gather more audit evidence than others. And we consider some of those higher-risk areas. So some of the higher-risk areas for the city's 2024 audit are revenue, which revenue, there's actually an audit standard that says that that's always going to be a high-risk area that you have to, an auditor needs to presume fraud risk is always going to exist in revenue. Also segregation of duties and management override of controls. Again, there's an audit codification standard that says that we, auditors, need to presume fraud risk exists there, that management could override a control. And so that always becomes a higher audit risk area. In addition, in the business-type activities, the recognized asset and correlating revenue that has to do with the major customer in those funds with the ongoing litigation, those are considered, that's a material estimate, and those are material numbers that could have a big impact on the statement. So that's considered a higher-risk area. As well as GASB statement number 68 and 75, which are your pension and OPEB calculation. So again, though, there's a lot of complexities that go into that and a lot of assumptions. They're very big numbers, and they have a big impact on the statement. So it's just considered a high-risk audit area. So even if there's an area that's not a high-risk audit area, it still gets attention during the audit. It just, we need less, you know, maybe need to do less substantial testing. We need to gather less audit evidence in those areas, and in these areas, we need more. So next, I've input, just a very summarized comparative statement of net position on your governmental activities, just to kind of look at what changed from 2023 to 2024. So overall, you can see your assets increased about $1.8 million, with current and other assets increasing 2.8, and the capital assets decreasing about $940,000. So capital, increase in capital assets was just due to current-year depreciation exceeding additions. And the majority of the reason for the increase in current and other assets was due to an increase in cash and cash equivalents and investments of about 2.4 million. And then both the deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources, we saw decreases there of about $2.2430,000, $436,000. And that was pertaining to those pension and OPEB, GASB 68 and 75 calculations. Current liabilities increased about 1.1 million, while non-current liabilities decreased about 1.5, leading to a net decrease in liabilities of about $475,000. So the main reason for the increase in current liabilities was there was a grant that was received of about $1 million that was considered unearned revenue at year-end because it wasn't used. And so that really increased that. That also had about a million-dollar impact on your cash and cash equivalents increase. So that impacted that there because you're holding the cash and you have that unearned revenue. And the decrease in non-current liabilities was primarily due to the pension and OPEB calculations, which decreased about 1.1 million for the pension and about $360,000 for the OPEB. But overall, there was about a half-million dollars of an increase in net position on the government-wide statements. So on the next slide, you'll see again a comparative summarized statement of activities for only the governmental activities. So we can see both revenues and expenses increased between the fiscal years. The three main reasons for the increase in revenue was that charges for services increased, with the largest increase being public safety, primarily an increase in ambulance transport fees as well as building inspection fees. We saw property tax revenue continue to increase again this year as those taxable values continue increasing. Investment earnings have continued to increase as well. And expenses, we just saw a slight increase there of about 0.8% over the prior year. And the expenses are significantly, on the government-wide statements, are significantly impacted by those government-wide GASB 34 adjustments, which are your capital assets, your pension, your OPEB, and your debt. So moving on to looking at some of the governmental funds, summaries and general fund. So now, now we're back to the modified accrual basis of accounting. So you'll find all of your major funds in the basic financial statements, and then you'll see an aggregated column for your non-major governmental funds. And so when you want to see the detail there, you have to go to the other supplemental information, and you can find all the detail of those statements broken out. But you still have your ARPA funds, so those needed to be obligated by, I'm sure you'll know, the end of calendar year 2024 and spent by the end of calendar year 2026. So I'm sure you guys have plans for those. And taking a look at the general fund. So overall, the general fund experience, just a very slight decrease this year of about $23,000. The unassigned portion of the fund balance decreased about $216,000 and is down to 4.4 million. So some key ratio, a key ratio to measure the general fund's health is the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and other financing uses, and looking at the number of days of expenditures there are in that unassigned fund balance. So the Government Finance Officers Association recommends no less than 60 days for that financial measure. So at the end of 2024, you were at about 136 days. It was a slight decrease from 2023, but, you know, unassigned fund balance was, you know, high. So you're still very, very healthy, fiscally healthy, general fund, fund balance. And, you know, you exceed that GFOA recommendation. So moving on to the business-type activities or your enterprise funds, which are your sewer and water funds. So overall, the sewer fund had an increase in net position of about $787,000. Operating revenues and expenses both increased over 2023 by about $193,000 and $155,000 respectively. Non-operating revenue and expenses increased about $147,000 net, and that was mainly due to an increase in investment income. And as of June 30th, 2024, the total net position was about $20.1 million in the sewer fund, and there were about $3.9 million of that was unrestricted portion. The water fund also had an increase of about $1.3 million in net position. We saw operating revenues decrease about $140,000 in that fund, while operating expenses increased about $456,000. The increase in operating expenses was primarily due to a settlement adjustment in that fund. Non-operating revenue and expenses increased about $333,000 net, mainly due to an increase in investment income as well. And at the end of the year, the water fund had a net position of about $19.9 million, with about $5.5 million of that being unrestricted. Now I'm going to talk about, a little bit about the other loose leaf letter that would have been in your bound report, and that one is the internal control letter. So as I said before, you know, we look at the system of internal controls for the purposes of, you know, planning and designing our audit. However, it is really important to remember, we do not express an opinion on the system of internal controls. And, you know, there could be deficiencies in that system of internal controls that we didn't identify. However, if we did identify something that we deemed to be a significant deficiency or material weakness in the system of internal controls, we would have to communicate that. So I am pleased to say that we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the system of internal controls. There was one small compliance finding for a budget overage, but none of those overages were significant individually. So now a little bit about some upcoming accounting items. So in note 22, which is on page 110, it discusses this new standard a little bit more in depth. But there is a new standard coming up that is going to, you know, most likely, I would anticipate it impacting your financial statements. So this is effective for the current fiscal year you are in now. It's GASB 101, compensated absences. So you're, we're really going to just have to analyze and kind of work through that. And I know we started talking about it a little bit already. So I'm sure it's on, you know, everyone's radar to get into. And that may result in a restatement next year. And if it does, that restatement will have to comply with GASB statement number 100, accounting changes and errors and corrections, which was a new standard that would have been effective for this year's audit, but it just didn't impact you because you didn't have any restatements for this year. So. It's also possible that you, the city might need a single audit next year, depending on what happens, which I know is on Anna and Leland's radar to watch for as well. So if you expend $750,000 or more in federal funds, you will have to have what's called a single audit under the uniform guidance, which will be done along with our audit, most likely issued in a separate report if you were subject to it. But I know there's a large federal grant in the water fund. There's the ARPA funds, which are federal. And I think there might be a few other projects ongoing that might have some federal funding too. So, so it's definitely possible that you might need that. So with that, I'll leave it open if anyone has any questions for me.
I do not. And thank you for your work, as always. Does anyone have questions at Chelsea?
Yeah. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Chelsea and your team. It's been a pleasure working with you guys.
It's great working with you and Anna too. Anna and Leland are so great to work with. They do an excellent job. They do just about, they do better than, I mean... They do amazing. I'll say that. Work with a lot, a lot of clients, but they, they really, they're outstanding. They, yeah, they're top of my list for just outstanding.
Oh, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will entertain a motion to accept the annual, to receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report.
We received and filed the financial audit.
There's second.
Second.
So a motion by Danny Mitchell to receive and file the financial audit, second by Carol Walchuck. Any discussion? No? Go ahead, Cleveland.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Aye.
Councilmember Currier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Motion cue.
Now we are up to C, and this is Target Semi-Annual Report with Mike Mahler from Economic Development.
I always get to follow the auditor. January meeting, I'm always in behind her. So good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Mahler. I'm the Economic Development Director. I'm the economic development director for Target, for our newest council members. So welcome to City Council. Chipped us some seats around up here, new faces. So for your, for your education, I do this twice a year. City engages Target to be the economic development arm. And so for that service, I come here twice a year to give an update on some of the things that we're working on, okay? So that's, you'll see me again in July, February, ten. So for the existing city council folks, I apologize in advance. I'm going to go, I'm probably going to talk about some things that you're all intimately familiar with, but we have two new council members here, so I think it's proper to educate them a little bit. So with that, I will say, as is always the case, I do spend, Rachel, Montiel, Steve, I spend a lot of time, I think, working. Sometimes I feel like a city employee, honestly. That's okay. So I do commit a great deal of my own personal time and energy to helping the city here. And for that, I'm grateful for the opportunity. So Target's been around for forty years. Thirty, thirty-eight of those years, we had one person, and now we're up to six. So I'm doing some things a little differently during my tenure here to have a more meaningful effect on the community and on the region more broadly. And so something worth mentioning here, we've, we've definitely expanded the way we do business. So just, I will, I'll go through the report. I'll touch on not everything in here, but I'll touch on some of the items I think are the most relevant. DPI, there's an indication, maybe a buyer out there today, I don't know, the auction's supposed to be going on right now. And so I just know that from my standpoint, that no matter what happens, I'm committed to whoever buys it or takes control of that site to help them facilitate getting it redeveloped for the benefit of the community and for the city. So I'm just a tool in the shed, and so we'll see what happens there, but I remain hopeful. I mean, it's obviously, it was a huge blow in February, and maybe now a, a new deer, a new door will appear for all of us to walk through here. And who knows what the future will hold. But anyway, I stand ready to assist in that regard. We'll see what happens here with the result of the auction. The MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation submitted or made a grant available that Target pursued to help small businesses, and we did that. I know, Kevin, you're a small business owner, and I don't know if you're a party to our grant program, but to support a more viable ecosystem for small businesses, we pursued a grant, and we're funding two point one four nine million dollars, of which a portion of that is being spent here in Alpena. And so I encourage any of you that interaction with small businesses, that they should absolutely reach out to Target through the chamber to help assist them. No matter what their needs may be, no matter where they are in the stage of life, from just getting started to, I'm old, I want to, I want to, I don't want to close my doors, I want to sell my business. We could help with that too. And it's, it's no expense to those businesses that we support through this grant. It's all paid for by the state. Commerce Lots, so the city of, or Commerce Drive, out, you know, just kind of out, out of, out of town here, not out of town, but slightly out of the downtown, Target owns several lots over there. The last two of those are contiguous, and we sold them here in the fall. And so a business that's on South US twenty-three is going to relocate their business to Commerce Drive, which is perfect for it. They'll put a new showroom up there and have some warehouse space in that. And I don't want to name the business because that's really for them to talk about when they're ready. The last thing I want to see is the south side of town lose a business and have an empty building there. And I'll touch on some of that here in my report a little bit later, that there is some love for the south side coming here too. With respect to the former Alpena Power site, which is a corner of Second Avenue where the bridge is, you used to know, Alpena Power used to be there a long time ago, it's torn down. That land was given to Target to, with the express purpose of getting it sold and redeveloped. And so for ten years, we've been working really hard to try and find something there. You know, for a while there, we thought maybe we were going to have a Marriott hotel going there, but it's an odd site, it's odd configuration. City owns the property on the waterfront, the river, the parking there. And so it's been challenging to find someone to make a viable project work there. We've been working for twenty months with a developer on that site. We thought maybe we'd have a sixty-six unit apartment building with some restaurants and, you know, retail space in the lower level. We've been working with them for twenty months. The city's had a great deal of interaction with them as well. And we just found out last week that they've elected to not pursue this project any longer, which is really sad. But it's a, it's a complex world out there today. And so in the meantime, though, we do want, in the meantime, Target wants to find a viable use for that site, maybe not permanent, but at least activate it. Because right now it sits there empty with nothing, producing no GDP for our economy, doing nothing. And so we're working and looking at some alternatives or options right now that are non-permanent in nature that could activate the space. We're thinking like maybe a pop-up market. If you've been to some, like downtown Detroit, for instance, at Christmas time, they, they have a pop-up market. There's other communities on the waterfront, west side of the state that have done that with success, also in Grand Rapids. So anyway, so we're evaluating options there. We'd love to see something happen there this summer. We've got twenty-five cruise ships approximately coming in here. A lot of those people get off, they come across that bridge. It'd be nice to have something there to greet them, something that they'd want to stop and spend money at potentially. So we're looking at doing that, and the idea being, it'll be temporary. So if five or six years from now, the, the financial dynamics of this market change enough, or a project is viable on that site, we've not precluded that, that development. We'll be able to move that stuff out, maybe put it on the city lot or the lot behind the city hall here, who knows? But anyway, so we're looking at some options here to at least make use of that space right now. Federal building, Jeff Koncheck, I think many of you know, owns the building. He does have crews doing some work on the inside, but it's for him to talk about the timing and what he plans for it, not me. But just know he's got something in the works there right now. Speaking of Jeff Koncheck, Fletcher Paper, Target pursued a grant to help with a selective demolition of the paper mill last, last winter. We were first loser when they graded all the grants. We came in just below the cut line. And so we were, we were disappointed. And Jeff would like to take that mill down. He's got use for that, but it's a, it's a big expense to do that. And so we stand ready to continue to try to assist him to find a means to partially pay for it. He's willing to pay for some of it. He just doesn't want to pay for all of it, which I don't blame him. It's a lot of money to put into that site. So we did organize a meeting this fall between Jeff and some folks at the State Land Bank to see if maybe there's a path forward there. And so we're evaluating some options here. So that still remains for me top of mind. You know, I know, again, we'd love to be able to see that space get activated over there. Especially again, with all the cruise ships coming into town, all those tenders, we don't want to greet them with an old blighted factory. So with respect to the DDA boundary expansion, we continue, I think our DDA continues to improve. It's, it's more vibrant than ever since I've been involved with it. I think that the, and it's obviously vital for the long-term benefit of this community that we have a great downtown. And so I think this year we made great, great strides. Second Avenue looks beautiful, the, all the work that they did on the other side of the bridge makes it look so idyllic now. And so the boundary expansion's done. I'm grateful. Now we've got DPI sitting within our, in our expanded boundary. And again, it just unlocks options potentially for whoever's going to buy that and select a path forward with respect to redevelopment and how that might tie into our, into our DDA district. Any questions on that one? No? Former Habitat site. So where the old Habitat used to be on Chisholm Street, I think Fifth and Chisholm, there's a sign there. There's a project that was coming. Unfortunately, so common in my world, you know, we get to announce projects and then something happens, snafus arise, and the projects don't move forward. The reason that sign is still up there, because I was leaning on the developer, why don't you take the sign down? The new owner of it does actually want to put housing on that site. He does really want to develop, he does want to develop that site. And I spoke with him in the last, last couple of weeks, and he's asked that the site, that the sign remain there, because he does want people to know, he does intend on doing something with it. I don't know what the timing looks like yet at this point. But again, we're here to assist him, trying to find ways to make the financial outcomes be reasonable enough that somebody want to undertake a project like that. Excited about the former Huntington branch. The buildings must sit there empty for a while now. It could use some love. And now we've got a buyer and a tenant for it, and so I'm grateful for that. And I, I think it's wonderful. I mean, they have the Bay Athletic Club after twenty years of being in the hospital, moving downtown. There's a lot of members at the Bay Athletic Club, and a lot of those members are going to be visiting our downtown now. Lots of parking there. So you know, the building's going to be a beautiful facelift, and it's in a pretty high-profile intersection, Third Avenue and Chisholm Street. It's kind of a main corner. So to have that, to have that building be reactivated and beautified, I think I'm really excited, excited to see that come. So more good news for our downtown. City property north of town, I've been intimately involved, working with a lot of different folks, trying to find some projects for the city property north of town. I was so grateful to see last winter, or last spring, Eric Ferguson called and said he wanted to put a new Edward Jones office up somewhere in town. Was very interested in that site. As it turns out, he made a pitch to the city, city went along with it. And now we've got an Edward Jones office out there at the end of that road. And on the heels of that, we've had some other developer, the developers behind the Gardens of Alpena project, who were looking at that same parcel that Eric, Eric ended up acquiring. The developers of the Garden of Alpena project had been up here every, every year, I think for the last four. They saw Eric's project going up, and they came here this spring, decided maybe now's the time to prioritize this community for their project. And so they're the folks who are talking about bringing independent living, sixty-eight independent living units. And on one side of the street, on the north side of that road, once it's extended through the trees, and on the south side of that road, thirty assisted living units and thirty memory care units. So one complex, two five-acre parcels, just under five acres, right, Steve? Four point nine five, to develop a great project. Significant investment in our community, seventy jobs, full-time, thirty part-time jobs, and the possibility of impacting our housing in a favorable way, right? Because for people who do have a house to sell, who don't want to maintain a yard, don't want to do any of that stuff, take a move into assisted living, make their houses available on the market to somebody looking for a home in our community. We know there's plenty of people looking for homes and no inventory. So this is a wonderful project, and so very excited. And I know these guys are chomping at the bit to get going, and I'll, I know Mac is on this, he's following me. So when I get done, you'll hear from Mac, our consultant, who's working on the formation of the Corridor Improvement Authority, which is one of the steps necessary to create the TIF that these developers need to bring this project to life. So anyway, very excited, and they want to get started on that yesterday. I'll just touch on some other things going on in town here. We have the PACE program for all-inclusive care for the elderly coming. They're taking up the space in Peebles, the old Peeble store was at the Big Bear Point Shopping Center. So that, that shopping center, like many in the country, is got vacancy and a little bit tired looking. So now we've got a tenant going in there for at least ten, maybe twenty years, putting money into that to create, you know, something that will benefit the community. And so that project is underway. I don't know exactly what the timing is right now, but they're working on it, preparing PACE to come to the community. Also, thankfully, the Thunder Bay Shopping Center has a tenant in the former Neiman space, not all of Neiman space, but a big chunk of it, with Ali. So I'm just grateful to see, with all the things going on in our community, we got stuff happening in the west on M thirty-two, we got stuff happening in the north. We have stuff happening in the south side of town, which is often overlooked. And so I'm just grateful to see this kind of distribution of some of the investment in our community being spread out. It'd be pretty hard to spread out head and east. So we'll take it though. Out in M thirty-two, you know, M thirty-two gets a lot of love, a lot of attention, a lot of traffic count. There's a lot of things, I, I'm not at liberty to talk about right now, that are being considered, that are wonderful projects for our community. I think would be well-received if they get there, but the reality is, because of the investment in M thirty-two, they just bring so much more, so much more interest in our community. And so the project up at the airport on the corner of Airport Road and M thirty-two, even though it's not a, it's not a twenty-five million dollar project, but millions of dollars is going to be spent there to, to, you know, add a restaurant fueling site, you know, convenience store at a great location. So again, I'm just happy to see, because for me logically, once it gets developed, from there to Home Depot or there to Aldi's is kind of fair game, right? We're just going to kind of fill that in over time. So anyway, I'm glad to see that investment at the airport and continue to work our way west. I'm sorry, work our way east, not west, wrong direction. With respect to housing, you know, the city did have entertained an offer for purchase of the remainder of the city land north of town. And that situation has since been retracted. That project will not go forward. Obviously, we do need housing here. We just had a housing, another housing study done that indicated we need fifteen hundred units of housing in the county. That's even more than the housing study we did a couple of years ago, fifteen hundred. And the, the bigger portion of that fifteen hundred is freestanding homes for sale, not just rentals. So I think a lot of us in this room understand the need to focus on housing, and Target is looking at how we can maybe better help serve that need, maybe change up the way we do some things here. So more to come on that at a, at a future update. But it remains at the top of, of our mission at Target, to help solve some of the housing issues we've got here. Target has a loan fund. I made seven loans last year totaling two hundred and ten, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Year before that, we made eight loans to help small businesses in our community get started. I, you know, I just, I wrote it in my report here, but it is worth mentioning that, you know, it is, it's the world we live in, the world I live in. You know, we, you hear announcements about projects, and then they don't materialize. And unfortunately, that's just, that's, you know, when you're dealing in the public, when someone comes here and makes an offer to the city to buy property to develop something, and it gets announced as part of a public meeting, and then there's a lot of hurdles generally to clear though. This is just the first hurdle, getting city on board, but then there's a myriad of other hurdles they have to work through, and sometimes they just don't all come together. And so while I wish every project that was announced at this podium would actually see the light of day, remains my goal, but just understand it's difficult. A lot of factors in play there. And then so my priorities for the year ahead, the sale and redevelopment of the former DPI site, that remains top of, of my list of things I want to focus energy on. Supporting the Alpena Gardens project, the one I'm talking about, independent living and assisted living. Help those guys get in a position to start construction this spring, and helping them get, hopefully contractors and everything they need to hit the timing that they're pushing for, further remark, further marketing the remaining property for development housing north of town, I think ideally. And then lastly, activating the parcel at Second Avenue and the River, just to turn it into something that's productive and draw more people into our downtown. And I guess just last thing I'll mention is, you know, a lot of the great things that are happening in our community and in our DDA is just a, it's a function of a highly effective and highly coordinated relationship between the city and the DDA. They are working very, very well together, and I think it shows. There's no dysfunction there, and so we got so many great things going on here. And so I just want to thank the city for all that you guys do to help support Anne Gentry and all the great work she's done. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention, and I do serve on the DDA board, so it's very near and dear to me as well, because I've been involved there for seventeen years. So, thank you. So any questions I could answer with respect to anything in my report? And it was a little long-winded, I apologize.
Mike, I did appreciate your report. I had one small question. The old Restor lot on Chisholm, right near St. Berner. When he, when the owner says perhaps housing, is he thinking single housing development?
I think he's thinking like, maybe like.
Own homes?
Something like that. You know, something a little, where you can get, you know, several units on a. I mean, to make the math work, a lot of times, that's really what you're going to have to do. You're going to have to be able to figure out, figure out the density, density issues. And so if you could bring sixteen, you know, eighteen, twenty units, that would be great, right? Yeah, right in the heart, almost in the heart of our downtown, it's right in the middle of our DDA now, the expansion. So again, that's, well, we, we stand ready to assist, right? You know, to help him find grant funding or find capital to bring a project like that to life, and so we'll do everything we can. And the market here is much better than it was. I mean, the old days, you know, it still costs three hundred dollars a square foot to build here in Traverse City. In Traverse City, you can get twenty-eight hundred a month for a three-bedroom apartment. Can't get twenty-eight hundred a month in Alpena yet. You may be able to get eighteen hundred a month. And so that thousand-dollar gap is a problem for us, is figuring out how to fill that. And so, but we've seen, we've seen rents rise, we've seen housing prices rise here pretty dramatically in the last couple of years. And so there may be a point of time where, you know, we do catch up and the math will work. Right now, though, we just, we gotta, we gotta try to make up for it, with the tools we can maybe bring to bear. So anything else, Carol?
Oh, that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
I think, although it was a township to encourage, I think in the South twenty-three area like this is a township possibly encouraging a little love be paid to the shopping centers and things like that, that they have to attract anyone to bring something in there for the most part for tired old buildings. They need to bring up the look, I think, to encourage the possibility of that case there, almost like they need a South twenty-three development authorities. A DDA, you know, anything could help in that light there, if they, if they wish to attract, I think, more businesses in that way.
It is, it is interesting to me, like, for instance, when Aldi's was, you know, Aldi's was a huge lift to get that to finally happen here. You know, I mean, it's been in the works for how long? Eight years? Nine years? And Aldi's wasn't interested in that site initially when I brought that to them, because they want to be right across the street from Home Depot. But I hate, you know, so trying to get the developer, the biggest, sixth biggest grocer in the, in the world is Aldi's, German company. You don't tell them where they're going to put their stuff. They tell you where they want to go. And I get calls, I get calls to the cheaper, why don't you make them go into Neiman's? Okay. They, they, they've got a lot more influence in the decision certainly than I do. But I will say, I know that when that shopping center was sold in my previous life, I, I, I was somehow involved in that a little bit. And the buyer who bought that shopping center said, I'm going to raise rates now. I'm going to raise rent rates and that's his prerogative. And he did that. And so then he saw some vacancy, it was hard for the existing tenants to deal with those elevated rents. And so one side of me would say, why would you do that? What sense does that make? And, and their position is we own property all over the United States. I've got lots of excess cash flow in other parts of the country. I could sit on this empty for as long as I need to. I'm going to get my rent. And if it sits empty, it sits empty until, until someone's ready to pay my price. And I'm thinking, wow, I would love to see obviously somebody put money, Danny, into the parking lot and pave it and seal it, put new striping in it and make it look more attractive. But we don't have a lot of leverage over the developers and their plans for their properties. And so, but I'm glad to see that at least again, you know, we got the right age sitting there empty now. At least it's a decent looking building and hopefully somebody will find a ability to repurpose it.
Are there any like taxation, taxation pushes that would like push developers into developing that supposed to sitting?
I don't know if I could answer that question. Taxation issues. There are incentives, there are some incentives that it, there are different tools, depends on where the building sits. Our DDA has got a lot more tools than businesses outside of the DDA. That's just the reality of the benefit of having a DDA. And so they're more limited. If there's tools out there and a place like that, it's more limited because it's not in the DDA. It's not in the heart of our downtown. This state focuses more time and money on downtowns, because for a long time they were neglected, right? Everything went out to the periphery and then downtowns died. And now it's like, we gotta get these down, down the back. So now the focus and energy and tools and funding is designed to do what we've done here in many, in many respects, which is, you know, make our downtowns vital and vibrant again. But it's coming at the peril now of the periphery again. So it's complicated. Thank you. Yeah. Anything else? I'm sorry. Maybe you guys want to get home and have dinner tonight. So I'm shut up. I get to come back in a minute.
I thought I would like to say thank you to Mike and his team. He does work very closely with city staff and we sure do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. So I will entertain a motion to receive and file, um, Bridget, semi annual report.
So move.
There's four.
Second.
Well, Carol made a motion to receive and file. Bridget supported. Any discussion?
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember Curry.
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Motion two.
Now we are down to eight D and it's a Hereon Humane Society semi annual report. I will be giving that report tonight because Mary Egan couldn't be here, but this is her report. So I'm not as entertaining as Mary, but I will read it. And then if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. So on behalf of the animal staff, volunteers and board of directors of the Hereon Humane Society, HHS, thank you to the city of Alpena for valuing the work of HHS and continuing to maintain a service contract with us to help offset the cost of housing treaty and caring for dogs and cats brought to HHS by citizens of the city. We are proud to be the city of Alpena's no kill animal shelter, serving the community seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five days a year for over forty years. It is an honor to be in partnership with the city, something we never take for granted. Intake and adoption numbers for the Hereon Humane Society in twenty twenty four. The city of Alpena, we took in three hundred and twenty, from the city of Alpena, we took in three hundred and twenty seven felines and fifty six canines for a total of three hundred and eighty three animals, eighty two more than we did in twenty twenty three. Animals from the city of Alpena are given priority admission to HHS because of the service contract we have with the city. This is especially important for city residents during kitten season when the city of Alpena cats and kittens and cats jump felines from one geographic area on HHS cat waiting list. Meaning that cats from Alpena, from the city get priority over cats from other areas. Not that we don't take cats from other areas because we do. Two hundred and eleven kittens from the city were taken in by HHS this past year, twenty two more kittens than, than last year. A total of sixty two animals came to HHS from other jurisdictions besides the city of Alpena. Total dog and cat intakes in twenty twenty four, three hundred and eighty nine cats and kittens and fifty six dogs and puppies for a total of four hundred and forty five animals from all jurisdictions. Animal outcome, animal adoptions, fifty three dogs and three hundred and fifty two cats were adopted in twenty twenty four for a total of four hundred and five animals adopted out last year. Return to owner, one dog and seventeen cats were returned to their owners in twenty twenty four, equaling eighteen animals. Those are usually animals that were lost and they end up with us. And then the owners, we scan for microchips or owners come in booking and we reunite them. The average length of stay for dogs at HHS is eleven days and the average length of stays for a cat at HHS is thirty seven days before being adopted. This year we invested in three new exterior doors and one new, no exterior and it should be, and one new interior door. New flooring in the dog room, lots of interior painting, including all the ceilings in the shelter. We upgraded our computers, Austin services. Having demonstrated our continued commitment to fiscal, ethical and humane responsibility and action for over the past year, the Hereon Humane Society respectfully asks for the renewal of the current service contract with the city of Alpena. Because of the increased cost of supplies plus the added cost of payroll as a result of the Earn Sick Time Act and the increase in the minimum wage this year, the Hereon Humane Society has respectfully requested an increase in funding from twenty two thousand five hundred to twenty five thousand. It is important to note that each animal adopted from HHS receives tests for common infectious disease, flea and tick treatments and present preventatives, heartworm preventatives, all standard and age appropriate, appropriate vaccination, socialization, safe and warm housing, care and feeding for some months at a time. That's the case with the newborn kittens and puppies who must be with us at least until they're eight weeks old to go to a new, to their new families. Spay and neuter surgeries performed by Alpena County's veterinary clinics. Any necessary veterinary care while the animals at shelter and our animals get a lot of veterinary care. In twenty twenty three, we spent sixty six thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty five cents at the two veterinary clinics in town that service HHS. Our bookkeeper is still tabulating how much we spent in twenty twenty four, but we budgeted fifty seven thousand dollars. We went way over that. The service HHS can provide, because of generous donations and funding from our service contract with the city benefits, public health for animals and humans alike. We are heartened that with the support of the city of Alpena, three hundred and eighty three city of Alpena animals who have resided at our shelter this year have been tested, treated, vaccinated and either have been or will be surgically sterilized, which will pay huge dividends in the community for years to come. We appreciate your consideration of our request for a modest increase in our funding. While twenty five thousand dollars is a sizable subsidy, it is a good bargain for the city of Alpena and will be responsibly used. Thank you for valuing human best practices for managing the homeless, unwanted, neglected and abused animal population in the city of Alpena. We appreciate our relationship with the city and salute you for the commitment to health and well being of the domestic animal population of Alpena. We would love to show you around at the shelter when it's convenient for you and the Hereon Humane Society is open Monday through Saturday from eleven AM to five PM and you are welcome anytime. Two other things that Mary forgot to mention in the report is, and this last year we are working on our new website and we're almost ready to launch it. And it's such a difference from what we have now. It's, it'll be easy to navigate. It's, it's really nice. And by next month, we should adopt our new bylaws and we have worked on those for about the last year and a half to try to perfect them. So we're constantly moving the shelter forward, taking care of animals and doing our very best for the animals in our community. Any questions?
I have a comment first. Thank you for all this, because I know you're on, you're the president of this board.
I am.
And secondly, I noticed that we do take in animals from other geographical areas, nothing specific. But do we get any funding from them? No. So it's at our
Wow. So we fundraise for everything that we do. And this last year, we, with the animals that we took in between the animals and the bills and staff, we were almost spent about four hundred thousand dollars. And we're frugal, as frugal as we can be with, you know, with everything that we do. Animals always come first, so there's never a question about spending money on them. And if we have to cut corners in other places, we cut corners in those places. But at HHS, animals always come first. Staff doesn't like that because I make most of those decisions. And, and the board sometimes, you know, they, they'll say to me, Cindy, you know, we spent so much on vet bills. And then I said, okay, if the vet calls me and says that an animal needs something, you want me to say no? And if you want me to say no, then I'm not the one who should be taking that phone call. Maybe you should be taking that phone call. Because that's a difficult, that's a difficult hill for me. I cannot say no. They've come to us, they're in our care, it's our responsibility. Even if we could have to go to Facebook and fundraise, that's what we do, but we care for them. So.
Do you still do can and bottle drives?
We still take cans, beer bottles, bring them out to us. We get them back and that helps to pay some of our vet bills. That's what we depend on those for. So we appreciate any can or bottle you can bring us. We appreciate. Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the Hereon Humane Society semi annual report.
Motion to receive and file.
Motion by
Second.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Carol. Any discussion? Anyone?
Councilmember Curry.
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
And councilmember Walsh. Motion two.
Thank you. And now we are up to the Corridor Improvement Authority update and we have Mac McClelland online. Hi, Matt.
Good evening.
Good evening. So you can, you can start. We'll start with you.
Okay, I will attempt to share my screen and we'll see if that all works. And you'll see that okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome. It worked. Yay. My name is Mac McClelland. I'm a consultant for the city. Actually, thinking back, I've been working mostly in the Bronfield Authority for about twenty years. So I've had the joy of working with the city folks for a long time. So we wanted to kind of talk a little bit about the proposed US twenty three Corridor Improvement Authority related to the Gardens of Alpena project here, just give you an outline of the project. Talk a little bit about the Corridor Improvement Authority itself, the district that would be established, development plan and tax increment financing plan and the process to establish and implement the authority. So kind of in summary, the Gardens of Alpena has a purchase agreement for about ten acres of city property along US thirty one, twenty three north, excuse me, for development and independent assisted living with significant investment and significant job creation. I'll just also say we had a public hearing to consider establishing the authority, passing a resolution intent on December third, kind of gave a similar presentation and wanted to update the council on that and also update the new council members as well to the concept and idea here that's being approached. The problem is Mike mentioned in his report that all the problems, increased construction costs and interest rates primarily present a significant financial challenge and the project really can't proceed without one, some sort of community financial support and what we're proposing is a, in the form of a property tax relief or a TIF financing. So from that corridor improvement, there's, you know, a number of different types of authorities. What we found is that this was the only authority that might be able to provide that capture for the type of project that we're talking about. So a corridor improvement authority is proposed and that would, would provide for the capture of increased incremental taxes. There's going to be a large investment on this property, a large increase in taxes. Some of those captures, taxes will be captured to reimburse expenses that we include in a development and tax increment financing plan that will be coming back to you for consideration in March. Held a public hearing on December second to initiate the process to establish the authority. And then we'll be, we'll ask consideration of a resolution to establish the authority and appoint the board on February third. So no action tonight. This is just an info, infomercial for you to be able to understand and ask any questions that you might have. So for corridor improvement authorities, the council can establish a corridor, a corridor improvement authority in district after an extensive public notification process. We have to notify, we had to put twenty signs around the, the area notifying them of the public hearing, notify all the taxing jurisdictions. So it's been quite a notification process as well. So you establish that authority. And then there's a development plan and a tax increment financing plan that's approved by the Corridor Improvement Authority and the city council that details all the development activities and tax capture. That's much like the DDA plan, development plan and TIF plan and Bronfield plans for those projects. And then a development agreement is executed between the Gardens of Alpena and the authority to outline roles and responsibilities. Who's going to do what in that situation? So for the Corridor Improvement District, the proposed district is mostly public property east of US twenty three and south of Hamilton Road. I believe you know all the area and it includes the Alpena Community College and Alpena Public Schools property as well. So this is an outline of the district, includes a couple of private parcels, but mostly city and college and school property that's included as well. One of the reasons that we had to expand it to that, so we have to have board members and three of which have to be property owners within the district. So we had to expand those boundaries to include those other jurisdictions as well. So in the development activities and tax, tax capture are going to be limited to the Gardens of Alpena property. There's a lot of other property there that could be used and utilized, but we want to target this development plan and the tax capture to just the Gardens of Alpena property. What they generate, it would be, what would be available for them. There's a development plan that's required under the act that kind of describes the district, details the proposed improvements and costs and outlines the arrangements and the process for moving forward. And then there's companion tax increment financing plan, which details the tax capture procedure and duration, how long it's going to last, what the estimates of the impact of the tax increment financing and states the portion of TIF capture that will be, that will be captured. And again, just another quick explanation, this is future capture of increased taxes generated by the, by the property and then captured by the authority and then reimbursed to the developer to help support the project. So there's no upfront cost in this. This is all based on the performance of the gardens to, to implement the project. If they do that, then those taxes will come in and we can capture a portion of those taxes. There's, there'll be a development agreement, as I mentioned, between the Gardens of Alpena and the Corridor Improvement Authority that really lays out the roles and responsibilities, financial arrangements, reimbursement procedures and ensuring authority protections as kind of a financing tool. And basically it says if, if the Gardens of Alpena builds the facility, the authority will capture those increased taxes to cover a portion of the development costs. And I'm going to just take a break there for a minute and turn it over, Mike, and talk a little bit about the arrangements for the Gardens of Alpena and kind of what might be included in the, in the development agreement.
So I promise you'll be more short-winded this time. So when this deal was brought before the board, when the developers came here and met with the board pitching their proposal to acquire the land, they brought with them a schedule based on assumptions, project cost assumptions and estimated tax, estimated taxable value of the property. And, and so, and based upon all that, when they met here, they, what they brought forward to you was a proposal that had them sharing taxes with the units of government, the local taxes of the city, the county, the library and the college from day one. Often, often it is the case where the developer will take all of the taxes, like the Holiday Inn Express project right here. City doesn't see any benefit from the taxes associated with their project because they were giving back to the developer to help pay for the development. In this particular case, the developer brought forward a proposal whereby they would share from day one eighty five, fifteen percent of the increase in taxes back with the units of government. So now that we've gotten through the point of actually really deeply analyzing it, their analysis financially and with the work of Mac and understanding what's, what's allowable under a corridor improvement authority, we finally came to some understanding, which was part of a fairly, fairly lengthy conversation last week with the developers. But the long story short is, we don't anticipate this project generating the level of taxes that they assumed. the level of taxes that they assumed at the time that they did their analysis. They can't capture all taxes, they can only capture local taxes. The ones I mentioned, school, college, I mean, not school, but city, county, college and library. School taxes are not eligible. And so for this, it means the developer is going to collect less money. So as a result of that conversation, the developer is proposing that rather than be an 85-15 split, 90-10 split. And so I just want to at least get that on city council's radar, that I think it is still generous that they're willing to share 10% when they're taking a very, much more significant hit that they anticipated because taxes aren't, it's not going to provide the level of support they were anticipating upfront. So anyway, there's going to be, that'll be part of the formal TIF plan that will eventually come to this body for adjudication in the next month or so. But anyway, I just wanted to at least share with you kind of where it is right now. Developer is okay with this 90-10 arrangement to move forward. And so we're not asking for any formal action till yet because it's not quite time. But anyway, I just want to get that in everybody's radar here. And as I pointed out earlier, these things are complicated. And these are, you know, these are assumptions that are made that, you know, sometimes don't always pan out. And so that's kind of how we got to the point where we are today. But the developer is ready to go. And so I am very grateful to have them still interested in this project in spite of the fact that the financial benefits created under this corridor improvement authority are not going to be to the extent that they anticipated upfront. So Mac, is there anything else I should add?
No, I just think that.
Mac, I'm not sure that your slides were advancing when you were.
Yeah, you're just on the front, on your top slide.
Oh, is that right? Oh, man, it was so good, too.
I know, I know you had a whole plan here. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
We'll redo it again.
You didn't jump in on me on that one, Phil.
Sorry, Sarah, I didn't want to interrupt you. We're going. Two that I wanted to point out to Kevin and Bridgette is that if this is your first introduction to a TIF, so it is the increase captured. And right now, that parcel is not producing any taxable value. So anything that we do out there, any development, the jurisdictions are only going to benefit. So this would be a 90% to the developer, 10% comes back to the taxing jurisdictions. And so basically, it's 10% more than we would have if it just sits out there because the city owns it, it's not getting any taxable value. But I just wanted to point that out, just so you know. And also, this brings in revenue to the schools. It's projected to bring in.
Six million.
Six million to the schools. And this is over 20 years. So this will be up to a 20-year TIF. So if they do pay off or they can, you know, do less than 20 years, so up to 20 years. So it has huge economic impacts beyond what is just in this. And again, this assumes a 2% increase in taxable value. And so that is just, it's a very conservative assumption. So just keep that in mind. It could be more or less than this. But I would project probably more than 2%, but we have to estimate on the low end.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
So Mac, anything else I wish to address while I'm standing here?
That's exactly what I was going to say is that, you know, they'll generate the amount, but the kind of the original thought was they'd be able to capture state taxes, but the corridor improvement authority doesn't provide for that. And so they'll still be generating those taxes, but those will go to school operating and the state education tax as well. So still a huge benefit to the community of that, along with, you know, the 100 jobs and spaces and activity. Then after the, this time period, all of those revenues go back to the taxing jurisdictions as long as this facility operates. So there's a significant benefit, you know, once that goes on. And without this incentive, the project is, can't, you know, isn't financially feasible and won't move forward. And so we don't really lose anything, but we have an opportunity to gain quite a bit. It's the concept between, under TIF. I just, hopefully you can see that schedule, but it's up there. And so, okay, so we had the resolution of intent that was at the council on October 21st. That's kind of the first step. We sent out all the notices to taxing jurisdictions and to property owners. Held a public hearing on December 2nd. And then we're anticipating to bring to you a resolution to establish the authority and appoint the board on February 3rd and approve the development plan and TIF plan and development agreement at your meeting on March 3rd. So that's kind of the concept. So those pieces will be in place. Hopefully, the developers can plan accordingly and then continue to move forward, closing the property and begin the development process.
I'll just, I'll just add to that. So as Mac mentioned, we had to have adjacent property owners so we could recruit board members. So those board members have all submitted applications to the city for you to assign them to the authority or to approve their appointment on the authority at the meeting on March 3rd. One resident for three adjacent property owners and presumably someone from the city, whether it's Rachel or one of you. So anyway, so we've already got those, those folks arranged, already met with them, discussed with them. So we're keeping the process rolling here. It's important to the developer that we not miss any dates here. And so, and I just, one last point I'd make is just that, think about an investment of this size and scale at that, on that parcel, that's just going to probably incentivize more attention for the remaining 70 acres over there. And so to me, this is just, you know, Eric Ferguson's ever-drawn office, first domino to fall. We're going to knock over about nine dominos with this project. And, and so I think it's just, again, I think it'll just help for more meaningful development over there, which benefits the whole community and our taxing units when it, when it finally occurs. So any questions with me?
I just have one question. The county doesn't need to approve this?
The county will have to adopt.
It will have.
They'll have to as well, as will ACC, as will the library. They have to approve the TIF plan.
Okay, thank you.
And the plan is, and I let the administrator know that we'll be coming to them on January 28th at their full board meeting. And I forget what the resolution was called, Mac, resolution of agreement, something like that. But it allows us to take out some time from that process. Because again, this is taxable income, this is taxes for them as well, where there's nothing being produced right now. So again, it seems like a win-win for, for those taxing jurisdictions. And then at the next meeting, February 3rd, we'll be asking if a member of council would be on the authority, but we can't form it until February 3rd or you can appoint or designate a staff member to do that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mac, do you have anything else to add?
No, unless there's any questions, thank you very much. I'm glad that you had the handout in front of you, so you could at least follow along. Main screenshot there, so.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting online. We appreciate it.
Oh, no problem.
No questions? Thank you, we'll talk pretty soon.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to receive and file?
Yeah, we should.
Entertainer.
I move that we receive and file the corridor improvement authority update.
Second. So we have a motion by Mitchell to receive and file, support by Waltech. Any conversation, discussion? Nope, Leland, go ahead.
Councilmember Hollins.
Hi.
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walsh.
Hi.
And Councilmember Bridgette. Motion two.
Thank you, Leland. Redemption announcements. A is the city is seeking an individual to fill a vacancy on the local officers' compensation committee for a six-year term. This is the committee that sets councils' pay. And they will meet yearly in the springtime before budget is set. And then B, the city is seeking an individual to fill a vacancy on the planning commission for a three-year term. So we will accept those applications. We're back to new proclamations. I read one. Now we're on to proclamation four, Dream On Day. After I read this proclamation, Chief Camp is here and he is going to come up and read something as well and has a, wants to have a conversation. So I will read first and then Chief Camp will come up. Whereas the city of Alpena is designated as, designated the 25th of January 2025 as Dream On Day to recognize childhood cancer awareness and to honor resilience and courage of young citizens across Michigan who have faced the challenges of childhood cancer, inspiring us all to be strong, to smile and to seek adventure amidst life's difficulties. And whereas this day serves as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the dignity, strength and bravery of these remarkable young individuals who have fought valiantly against childhood cancer. And whereas the fortitude displayed by these young, by these children has fostered a sense of community and solidarity. And whereas we acknowledge the significance of dreaming and achieving our goals, wishes and dreams, no matter what life obstacles we face, whether it be cancer or life shortened due to an illness. And whereas we are aware that over 15,000 children and families are affected each year by cancer each year. And whereas it is fitting for the city of Alpena to support Golden Key Charity and the Dream On Chain campaign and through this proclamation, encouraging our citizens to unite in the fight against childhood cancer and to extend their support to affect youths and their families. It should be to affected youth and their families. And whereas this attention to a day to dream on, to believe in our, what our goals, wishes and purposes are, we invite our community to participate in raising awareness and making meaningful impact, including a collaborative initiative aimed at breaking a Guinness World Record by adding links to the Dream On Chain to symbolize our commitment to the cause we encourage, the citizens and acts of encouraging, encouraging ourselves and others to be brave and dream on. Now therefore, I, Cindy Johnson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim January 25th, 2025 as Dream On Day in the city of Alpena. And Chief Camp?
Good evening, council. On behalf of the city staff, I just got a little bit of more information to add on to this. I have a prepared statement here. Golden Key, pardon me, Golden Key Charity provides last wishes for kids who are fighting cancer and other terminal illnesses. The 2025 goal is to help 500 children. There is a camp that is currently being restored in Gladwin that will give children and their families a retreat to get away from the stress and sadness that this disease brings with it. Patients can get away for a day or a week to just be a kid again in an environment filled with love, hope and encouragement. Children who are at the end of life don't get an extended lifetime to reach the dreams. We have all known a child whose life ended far too soon. A Golden Key Dream's average cost is $1,000. The president and founder, Lisa Kujawa, could not be here tonight, but she will be coming to Alpena in a couple of weeks to accept a check from the city of Alpena, dressed for your day, staff members. These funds will help grant an opportunity for a child to go to camp and just be a kid. In addition, city have, city hall staff members put together 600 links to help Golden Key Charities reach their goal of entertaining the Guinness Book of World Records as the longest paper chain in the world.
And that's what we have here in the box.
A lot of time, but did our part. Although this has not been verified by Lisa, we found that the current record is 18 miles. Pretty impressive, so.
Picture of you two.
Yeah.
You said it's a problem.
Sure, we're going to do this, but we'll try.
Well, yeah, just part of it.
Mike?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can always, you know. You can. Okay. Now we're up to a report, legal services for the corridor improvement authority. Rachel?
Right, so I was thinking that we're going to stay on there. So I'll answer what questions I can about the documents. So in your packet is an engagement letter from Warren Norcross and Judge LLP. We're working specifically with an attorney there, a subject matter attorney, Jared Belka, that is working with Mac. And so Mac has some documents that he's drafting. And so he needs an attorney that specializes in this to allow, or excuse me, to check his documents. And so I put a recommended motion for each of you for 11A on your agenda. And it's not to exceed $7,500 in services. And I did have Bill review the engagement letter.
Well, I'll entertain a motion and then if we have questions or comments, we can ask.
I move to approve the agreement with Warner Norcross and Judge LLP for legal services to assist the city with establishment of the corridor improvement authority, not to exceed $7,500 and authorize city manager Smolinski to sign the engagement letter.
Just a second. So welcome by Waltech, second by Mitchell. And I'm going to repeat the motion just so if that's what makes it legal. Move to approve the agreement with Warren and Norcross and Judge LLP for legal services to assist the city with establishment of the corridor improvement authority not to exceed $7,500 and authorize city manager Smolinski to sign the engagement. Any question? Any questions? Comments? Okay, Leland?
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walsh.
Hi.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
And Councilmember Hollins.
Hi.
Motion two.
Thank you.
So now we're down to council committee reports. I have nothing. I did HHS, so you've heard from me already. So Danny, do you have?
The only thing I have is there's a meeting of the Alpena County Land Bank Authority tomorrow. And one of the items on there, which was good news that I saw, was the land bank has received from the state of Michigan reimbursements for 307 Bedford, $35,238, 321 Bedford, $36,817, and 317 Bedford, $61,594. These were the properties down from Ella White Schools that were purchased and demolished. And a purchase agreement has been made. I don't remember if it's been, has it been signed already? Has been signed by Habitat Humanity. And I'm surprised that they don't have the footings down there yet.
That's it. Okay, thank you, Danny.
I have nothing to report.
And I know that, I know that Kevin and Bridgette don't. But you will.
You will.
So we're down to new business, NEMCOG contract master plan and zoning for housing reform with Montiel Birmingham, Director of Planning Development. Zoning, hi, Montiel.
One. So earlier this year, we submitted a grant request to MISTHA for $50,000 to redo our master plan. We were awarded those funds and that was brought to council for signature. So that has been done. We are in the next phase of that, which Northeast Michigan Council of Governments, NEMCOG, is who we partner with to do master plan updates, zoning ordinance updates and a whole host of things. But as part of this master plan update, we are entering into a separate contract specifically for this and coordination with the grant. And so that is what this latest request is for and just requesting you to review the contract and allow our city manager Smolinski to sign.
Does anyone have questions with Montiel? Okay. So I entertain a motion. You have one in your packet.
I move we approve the professional services contract with Northeast Michigan Council of Governments or NEMCOG for the master plan plus zoning for housing reform and allow city manager Rachel Smolinski to sign the contract.
So motion by Danny, second, support by Waltech. But I'm going to read the motion. The motion is to approve the professional services contract with the Northeast Michigan Council of Governments for master plan but zoning for housing. but zoning for housing reform and allow city manager Rachel Smolinski to sign the contract. Any discussion?
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
And Mayor Johnson. Motion to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have bucket truck replacement with Steve Schultz, city engineer.
First order of business is to adjust the camera. Because I've been getting comments, so. Now our two new council members are not cut off. Price is a word. All right. All right. In two thousand sixteen, the city purchased a used bucket truck from Alpena Power Company. This vehicle has served us well for many years, considering the twelve thousand dollars that we paid for it. This vehicle was in need of a lift cable replacement, which is a standard. If they have actually like an expiration date on them, you just you don't have any choice. It's a safety factor thing. So it was in in need of that replacement and possibly some other repairs. While en route to the repair facility, the engine failed. The estimated cost to make all the repairs necessary for it to be usable again is forty forty thousand three hundred dollars. After discussion with Doug Rosensky, the fleet manager, we feel is too much to spend on a two thousand one truck. After some research, Doug found several comparable bucket trucks for sale online that were in better shape and eight to eleven years newer than the existing truck. One truck in particular is a two thousand eleven priced at fifty two thousand seven fifty and on a lot in Michigan. Other comparables are between ninety and a hundred and twenty thousand and and are normally several states away on some of those. Uh this truck has not experienced salt and is in great condition. Further, the engine matches that of the new trucks we are purchasing, so all the wear parts will be similar. Due to the unexpected failure of the existing bucket truck, this purchase is not budgeted. However, there are sufficient funds within the equipment fund balance to purchase this important piece of equipment. I'm requesting that we transfer money from the equipment fund balance as well as approve the purchase of the bucket truck. And due to the importance of this vehicle, I'm also requesting that a check be issued immediately in order to pick it up as soon as possible. Uh typically, we wait to be invoiced and then two weeks later we could pay it. But in this case, we can't be invoiced. We have to present a check when we pick the truck up, so. So there's the two recommended motions there. Anybody has any questions?
Questions for Steve? Um so I'll entertain the first motion. And someone want to make.
I move that we approve the budget amendment to add fifty three thousand dollars to the equipment line item to purchase a used bucket truck.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Walcheck, second, uh supported by Hollingshead um to approve the budget amendment to add fifty two thousand dollars to the equipment line item to purchase a used bucket truck. Any discussion? Leland?
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Mayor Johnson. Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Motion to.
The second motion.
I move to approve the check to be issued at the amount of fifty two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the fleet manager to purchase the bucket truck from the online equipment dealer.
Just a second.
Second.
First, so we have a motion by Mitchell, second by Curry um to approve a check to be issued in the amount of fifty two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the fleet manager to purchase the bucket truck from the online equipment dealer. Any discussion?
Good deal. Yeah.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
And councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Motion to.
Now we have two uh twenty twenty five plumbing contract services and Steve still with us.
All right. On January fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, the city received an open proposals for plumbing services within the city of Alpena. The contractors were asked to provide a list of hourly hourly rates for HVAC and plumbing services. The overall intent of this project is to allow the city multiple options for plumbing and mechanical services for small project and emergency services within city buildings. Example of this would include emergency repairs to HVAC systems, repair of major plumbing issues and miscellaneous annual system inspections to boilers and back backflow preventers. Both local plumbers have expertise in different buildings and facilities across the city. Uh also, there are currently water services that are lead or potentially lead containing uh that the city is responsible for replacing as part of the requirements. Due to the age and of most of the residents in need of replacement, there will be times when it would be more cost effective to reroute the internal plumbing to prevent damage to homes or avoid decks, porches, landscaping and driveways. By having these plumbers under contract and readily available, these services can be completed quickly and cost effectively with minimal disruption to our citizens. So for this reason, is the intent to award multiple contracts to the contractors listed below. This will spread the work out and not overwhelm one contractor with and allow the city multiple options in case of emergencies. This practice has been utilized by other communities working on their lead and galvanize services as well. Um you can see the two recommended motions and this uh process was used last year. Uh we awarded multiple contracts and it worked very well for us, so we're going to continue this.
Does anyone have questions? Steve?
No, no questions.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, go ahead. We have two.
I'll move to motion to approve a contract with Lake Shore Plumbing, Heating and Cooling of Alpena, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand.
Mm hmm. Second. So I we have a motion by Bridgette, second by Carol um to approve the contract with Lake Shore Plumbing and Heating and Cooling Inc. of Alpena, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for the amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Okay, Leland?
Councilmember Hollinshead. Hi. Mayor Johnson. Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
And councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Motion to.
So we have a second motion on this.
Second. The move to motion to approve a contract with Wyancoff Plumbing and Heating of Alpena, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for an amount to not exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
So second. So we have a motion by Curry, second by Walcheck to approve the contract with Wyancoff Plumbing and Heating of Alpena, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for the an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Leland?
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Councilmembers Curry.
Hi.
And councilmember Hollinshead. Hi. Motion to.
Thank you. Now we have the twenty twenty five utility excavation services and Steve.
This is the same, different. Uh on January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the city received an open proposals for utility excavation services within the city of Alpena. The contractors were asked to provide a list of hourly rates as well as average price for installation of a water or sewer service. Their average prices are as follows in the memo. Uh the overall intent of this project is to allow city multiple options for excavation services for small projects. Examples include emergency utility breaks that are outside of the equipment or staff capacity, digs in cooperation with the city DPW where larger equipment is warranted, uh hauling of materials with larger trucking equipment and various other activities. This will be year two of using multiple contractors for water and sewer infrastructure repairs. Year one being deemed a success, we feel continuing this program will benefit all parties involved. The only difference this year is that the contractors will now be responsible for providing all materials for the water and sewer repairs. This internal free up employees to update infrastructure records during that time period. Um we we provided all the materials last year. It didn't go as well because, you know, we we had the materials and they had to come and get them from us. This way they can order materials they know, you know, they know their own suppliers, you know, can get them from different people if they need to, so. Uh this will probably work out better. Um so it's intent to award to multiple contracts, multiple contracts to the contractors listed below. And this will spread the workout and not overwhelm one contractor and allow the city multiple options in case of emergencies. And there's five motions there.
So um then let's start with you. Well, it's.
It'd be my pleasure to um uh move to motion to approve a contract with Bedrock Contracting and that's excavating of Alpena, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion um by Curry, support by Mitchell to um approve the contract with Bedrock Contracting and Excavating of Alpena, Michigan for rates outlined in their proposal for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Leland?
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
And Mayor Johnson. Motion to.
I move we approve the contract with CNC Excavating of Alpena, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for the amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
And I'll support. So we have a motion um to approve the contract with CNC Excavating of Alpena, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Leland?
Councilmember Mitch, uh Walcheck.
Hi.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
And councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Motion to.
So I um make a motion to approve the contract with E and M Property Investment Improvement LLC of Hillman, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for the amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
Second.
So motion by Johnson, support by Walcheck um to approve the contract with E and M Property Improvement LLC of Hillman, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for the amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Any discussion?
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
And councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Motion to.
Next motion is to approve a contract with McArthur Construction of Hillman, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Walcheck, support by uh Bridgette um to approve a contract with McArthur Construction of Hillman, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Leland?
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
And councilmember Curry. Motion to.
I'll motion to approve a contract with Environmental Excavating, Michigan for the rates outlined in their proposal for an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand.
Second.
So we have a motion by Bridgette, supported by Curry um to approve of the contract with Environmental Excavating Michigan for rates outlined in their proposal for the amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Leland?
Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
And councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
Motion to.
Thank you, Leland.
Probably won't have to do that for another three hundred and sixty four days.
After this next one.
So now we're down to the traffic control order um um one dash twenty five, no turn on red. Um and Steve's standing there.
All right. The new traffic signal install that third Bagley Hobbs intersection is equipped with is equipped and currently programmed with an independent left turn sequence as well as a pedestrian only sequence. Allowing these vehicle and pedestrian movements prohibits the right turn on red, which is typically allowed as a standard traffic light without these phases. Once the attached traffic control order is in place, DPW staff will install signage prohibiting these right turns on red. Um important to note, I guess, that the the prohibition of the right turns is is needed for right now. Um is it going to be all the time? There's going to be times where there's no pedestrians and no left turn cycle. So it will appear that maybe people are waiting there longer than they should. I think this is the best solution right now because the next solution is to uh install um the the digital signage at on each light signal head that says that'll actually light up and say no turn on red right at this time and then it'll go off when it's safe to turn right on red. Uh we're getting some prices back on that right now. I don't think it's cost prohibitive, but it it could tend to be expensive, so. And we'll see how that come back, but for right now, I think the signage is the way to to go right now.
Um and I have a question. Have the signs been ordered?
Or ordered, I they might even be here. Yeah, they were ordered last week.
Okay.
And it usually takes three, four days, so.
Then as soon as.
Miss dig is already cleared. Yeah.
Thank you, so they're coming. Um so I'll entertain a motion and then we can discuss if there's discussion.
I move that we approve the traffic control order one dash twenty five to prohibit right turns on red at the third Bagley Hobbs intersection.
I'll second.
So there's a motion by Walcheck, support by Hollingshead to approve the traffic control order one dash two five to prohibit right turns on red at the third Bagley Hobbs intersection. Any discussion about that?
Just a question. Yes, there'll be a sign. It's a four corner sign.
Hmm, there's four signs, yeah, one at each stop bar, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And again, safety is.
Priorities.
Is our priority, so you know, people might be waiting there for a little bit, but I just want to keep putting that out there. It's about safety because we can't take a chance that anyone's turning right, even if they think it's clear because there could be a pedestrian that has the right way.
Yeah, there's, I mean, they have the pedestrian buttons there, so the pedestrian cycle can start at any time. So they could hit that button and, you know, you look left, you look right, you look left again and all of a sudden now there's a pedestrian in the crossing. So we're just, we want to eliminate that for now completely until we get. Yeah, yeah.
So as a city, we just ask people to be patient. Um it's two times during the day in school is before it starts and when it gets out that um there's lots of traffic, it's been like that for a long time. You're picking up your children, other people's children are walking. Um please, please just be patient. You'll be out of there sooner than you think. And we appreciate it.
For clarity on that, is that uh it will be no right turns at any time or for those times you just mentioned?
No, when the signs are up, when we put these signs up, there'll be no right turn.
No right turn, red.
We are going to investigate putting the sign up on the light that during those times it says, or a pedestrian hit the button to go. It will say you can't go. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Um but otherwise, if the sign, if we get to the point where we put it on the light, if the sign is off, they can go. But we're not there yet. We're not there yet.
Now it is going to prohibit it all the time on red.
Absolutely, thanks, thank you.
Yeah.
Plan.
This week, pretend we're Ann Arbor. If you can't turn right on red anywhere in Ann Arbor. Thing.
Oh, good to know.
It's a thing.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that? No. Um so Leland?
Councilmember Mitchell.
Hi.
Councilmember Walcheck.
Hi.
Councilmember Curry.
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinshead.
Hi.
And Mayor Johnson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, now we're down to um under new business cap. And this is selection of mayor pro temp. Um I think two people are are going to ask for that position and it's up to council to um vote on that. So what I'm going to do, um if you if anyone wants to, they're more than happy, I'm to let you address the rest of council and we'll listen and go from there. So with that being said, um Leland, I would ask to be called blast when we take role on any motions that come, call me blast.
Blast?
Blast.
Yeah. Oh, okay, yes.
Um so um that's that's what I want. That's what I get.
Okay, yeah. So um Bridgette, does Carol or Dan? Well, thank you. All right, I have something written. I hope that it's um brief enough. Okay, so hello, everyone. Um I'd like to throw my hat in the ring and provide some information about why I think I would be a good mayor pro temp. The first goes with the information and the past I've had with city council and I've learned a great deal over the last three years and listening and learning from my colleagues who have provided a venue for understanding how our city works. And for each meeting, I like to prepare myself to vote on the ideas that are presented in our packets and I do as much research as I possibly can before the city council motions are presented. And even though we don't always agree on everything, I feel we're we've still been supportive of one another. And I've tried to use these moments as opportunities to use my interpersonal communication skills and um and I know that I educate myself when conflict occurs because I can't run away from it, no matter what I do. I can't avoid it. So I've got to learn to be collaborative and I think I've I've got a good start on that. Additionally, part of being a good representative is discovering the historical background. For example, the water sewer took me a long time to get on board with that one or just understand what was going on. And doing so helped me with a lot. And doing so helped me with lots of the issues that have come up. I've tried to do that by absorbing, reading, asking questions and observing and attending as many events as I can. I believe I have a good relationship with the council, and I am happy to say that I was involved in that partial water sewer agreement, although it's been ongoing, I have to say, for a long, long time. Second, I have informed myself through additional means. I served on a number of committees and boards, including the Historic District Study Committee, Board of Review, Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary Historic District Commission, Elpena Housing Task Force, Chamber of Commerce, River City Board, Art Elpena, and the Zording, Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm enjoying being on all of these boards because I'm speaking with like-minded people who are passionate about preserving our historical past, working on current goals and moving toward foreseeable, foreseeable future objectives. At each meeting I attend, I learn more about our wonderful city as well. I very much enjoy taking part in the city events. For example, we had La Dia de los Muertos, and I love to speak Spanish, and I got a chance to do that. That was so great. And I also go to lots of ribbon-cutting ceremonies through city council. So I get to name, I, just to name a few, um, the, uh, early spoken about work out, out, out on Hamlock Lane. In addition to these memberships, I've also been involved in another, other events, for example, the McCray Park Visioning Session, Thunder Bay Junior High Project-Based Learning Program, From Tunnels to Towers 5K, and with something I'm very proud of, the creation of the Little Red Lighthouse Restoration Committee. So I just want to say that I am truly enjoying having immersed myself in the workings of Alpena and the way it runs. And I think that this is an opportunity for me to do even more, maybe step up. Thank you for hearing me out, and I hope you'll consider my bid to become mayor pro temp. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. That's not a lot, Carol.
Thank you. It's almost like I have a degree. Okay.
In public speaking? Well, I would like to first start off with, especially for the benefit of, of the new individuals. Thank you very much for coming on board of the councils like us. But even more so for the, uh, maybe the members of the publics who may not know what a mayor pro temp is. And mayor pro temp is a member of the city council or similar governing body who is selected to serve as the temporary or acting mayor in the absence or incapacity of the mayor. Um, why is this so important? It's continuity of leadership, urgency preparedness, balancing of roles, representation of the city. And, uh, the mayor pro temp presides over the city council meetings in the mayor's absence. If they're ineffective in managing these meetings, it could lead to disorganized proceedings, lack of structure, and difficulty in achieving productive discussions. Mayor Pro Temp's roles and responsibilities are presiding over the meetings.
Excuse me.
Uh, supporting the mayor, community engagement, and succession planning. Uh, succession planning has a lot to do with survivability. Moving the, uh, the city forward if the, again, the city, the mayor is, uh, incapacitated at some reason or God forbid, something more, uh, worse happens to that individual. I retired from the Air Force in ninety-three and moved my family to Ken Ross Charter Township. Uh, from the beginning up there, I wanted to be involved in the community. I have served both in Ken Ross and here in Alpena. While in Ken Ross, I served on the DPW advisory for four years, served with the Ken Ross Planning Commission for six years, and was elected to the Ken Ross Township Board serving eight years. My wife and I moved to Alpena in twenty fourteen to be full-time grandparents, which they really have enjoyed. Thank you. Still wanting to be involved, I applied to fill an open seat on the Alpena Planning Commission and served four years. In twenty nineteen, I ran for and was elected to the city council, re-elected this past November. My qualifications are twenty years in military service, which include leadership and continuity, ten years of planning, and thirteen years of governance. While on the Ken Ross Township Board, I led the board during the times when the supervisor was not available or sick. My desire is to serve our community and members of this community, of this council and our mayor. As the most senior of the council members, I respectfully place my name in nomination for mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Danny. So we, we have heard from Danny and Carol. Um, so it's now up to us for someone to make a motion, um, for one of them. So that's where we'll start.
I will make a motion to move that councilperson Carol Walchak be appointed to mayor pro temp with term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Excuse me. Is there support? I will support that. Any discussion? No. Leland?
Can I call her too?
Yes, she can vote.
Okay. Councilmember Walchak.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurier.
Aye.
Councilmember Collinshead.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell. And Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Motion three.
Um, so I thank both of you for stepping up to do that. Uh, it will not preclude me from, um, calling people into meetings that I think are qualified to be there. Um, so it won't always be the mayor pro temp. It might be Kevin. It may be Bridget, but it'll depend on the qualifications and what we move in that. I just want to let everybody know that. Okay. So now we're going to move on to council member. So, um, I'll pass one of these out to everyone. So as we go through these, and I'm going to start with, um, with senior members. What, so as we go through these, um, let's say Danny is telling you what committees, what three committees he wants to be on to start with. Um, write those down under Danny, um, because once we go, um, and move that Danny be appointed to those committees, you have to read that whole list, including the alternates he's on and the mandatory committees that he will be on. Um, and, and I will start it when we get to the point where we're ready to vote, just so everyone understands what I'm asking. So I have started this. Um, um, so I'm going to tell you the committees that, that I want to be on. I'm already on the retirement board. I'd like to continue that. I'm on Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority. That's recycling. I would like to continue that. I am on the Hereon Marine Society, Inc. I'd like to continue that, and I am on target. Um, they voted me to be on that board. It's a council appointment, but I am on that. Alternate, I'd like the County Land Bank, Art Elpena, um, the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Committee, and then the Board of Review, we all do, Inner Governmental Council, we all do. But I, I have to be on the election com- um, commission because that is a mayor, um, appointment. No one else can do that. So that, that is my list. So that being said, we still have a list of, you know, between the, um, between the alternates and the boards, there's like twenty-seven, um, slots we have to fill. So Danny, I'm going to let you start. And if we have extra committees that we haven't filled, then we'll go around again. Who wants to do that? So, but I want everyone to at least have three, because that's fair. Okay. Danny?
Okay. Alpena County Land Bank Authority. First, NEMCOG. Alpena County Central Dispatch.
Central Dispatch. Okay.
First three.
Okay. And what would you like to be your alternate? What would you like to be alternate?
Hunter River Center.
Hunter River. You should probably pick one more.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because.
Well, you only have a rep, so that's kind of out of there.
He's not part of the Emergency Management Advisory Committee? Did you give this one?
I have a, I, I have that written down, Emergency, um, Management, uh, for the alternate.
You want the emergency. Yeah, okay.
That's an alternate?
Yeah.
Emergency. Okay, thank you.
Center. I just want to make sure. Central Dispatch. So, that being said, Carol, you would be up next.
All right. Um, I would like to remain on the Alpena Authority for Brownfield Development. The, excuse me, I would like to get the name right. It is the, sorry, the Marine Sanctuary, and I don't remember what the acronym is. Oh, Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary. And, um, the Alpena, oh, excuse me. I would like to stay on the River City Board. But Rachel, it's my understanding that that's going to be subsumed by the Land Sanctuary?
No, you know, I think it's going to be at least every year because they have a lot of activities before they can, you know, actually merge. Um, or, you know, they still have funding, so they will also be going through a visioning session soon, um, to determine the interpretive signage that we talked about. So I would say, go ahead with the, with that appointment.
Well, they appointed me secretary.
Okay.
Great. And their first day, you're.
Vice chair too.
So then I, I guess my, um, alternates, I'm going to only name one, and that would be the, um, Historic District Committee. And is, okay, and then I'll wait, um, to hear what other people want before.
Not the study district, but the historic.
Right. The.
The Historic.
Historic.
Historic District Commission.
Those both alternates?
I just picked one alternate so far because I would like to give, um, Bridget and Kevin some opportunities.
One sec. I gotta get these on my paper. Technically, technically Kevin and Bridget came on the same day, but Bridget came first. Bridget, what would you like?
Um, I would love the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary.
So that would have to be an alternate, but I, um, I am the alternate on that. Do they?
I don't know. I have not attended one of those meetings. Um.
Usually one.
So.
One alternate.
So that, that one's already.
Oh, okay.
Looking for. Um, so I'll tell you, um, we need somebody for Hunt, um, that, that, uh, we need an alternate for NEMCOG, um, City Retirement Board, we need, um, another person. Target.
Very exciting.
It is exciting.
Yeah.
She told me that.
We need an alternate, Art Elpena, we need a representative, um, County Dispatch, we need an alternate, um, Emergency Management Advisory Committee, we need a rep and an alternate, Historic Study Committee. Uh, we can have up to two reps, and no one has signed up for that yet. Um, and the same with the commission, um, because Carol did. We need two people, up to two people. So that's kind of what's left.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I could, just, uh, the Emergency Management Advisory Committee and Alpena County Central Dispatch. We were typically back-to-back meetings. Just that, uh, if somebody's interested in serving up all of those.
I can take both of those.
Okay, let's put, let's put it in Danny's, and we can always, um, his, uh, have a conversation about that. But if they are back-to-back, that makes sense. Thank you.
What was the other one?
Emergency Management and Central Dispatch. I've been like, oh, okay.
And then a little additional information about the retirement board. That means quarterly, and it's usually at, um, noon because we do have, you know, council members that work and, and, you know, needed to be during that, and it's usually about an hour. Um, sometimes it runs over a little bit, but, you know, twelve to one commitment quarterly. And then the historic committees are really ad hoc, you know, as needed. Um, same with, what is?
Or Elpena.
Monthly?
Quarterly.
Is that available?
Quarterly. So Hunt is also quarterly. Yes.
Um, I would love the Art Elpena.
Danny, I'm, I'm gonna take you, because you were an alternate for the Emergency Management, so.
Yeah, I totally moved.
Yeah. So I'm taking that off yours, but there, somebody can be an alternate. Sorry.
Um, so I'll do the Historic District Study Committee. And then we said art alternate, or was that not available at all? Or pardon me, Thunder Bay Marine Sanctuary?
No, it, that one's not available.
And then, yeah, I'll do the retirement.
Okay, thank you. It's a very important board, even though, you know, it's.
No, no, no.
Well, it is. We learn all about investments. It's, it's. I'm the chair.
Friendly face.
We're in the main execution here.
How about you?
And then, so I got my three.
Okay.
Do you want to?
So for, um, an alternate. Let's see. I'll tell you what's available. Um, I'm still available. Danny's the alternate. Um, there, you can be an alternate for, um, NEMCOG, but those, you travel for that.
That is travel to Gaylord. It is usually a meeting ten to twelve. Ten to twelve.
Okay.
So if you're available for that, then our, our, our meetings are always the third, uh, third, Thursday of the month.
Um, I don't know that I'm able to travel that often.
So we need an alternate for Target, uh, and you did Art Elpena. We need an alternate for, um, Alpena County Central Dispatch.
Um, I can alternate that.
What did you say?
The county dispatch.
So would that also include Emergency Management?
Steve and I would do that. Those are back-to-back meetings, and if Danny can't, he would then.
Oh.
If you don't want to.
I'm just trying to fill my boxes.
Me too.
I was trying to keep up with the lists. Awesome place. So, um, yeah, I, I apologize.
No, no, no.
Anything that you wanted.
We'll never say anything we wanted.
Pardon?
We'll never say anything we wanted.
Sorry, Fran.
Might not like it.
Okay. Into the, okay, Kevin, we'll go, we'll go to you, and then we'll go back around and see what we got.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to hunt if it's still available.
Yep, it is.
All right, Alpena is gone, and the alternative is?
Yeah.
So Central Dispatch and Emergency?
Danny has those, and Bridget has, um, is the alternate on those.
What would you like to give me?
Okay, let me, let me, let's see. So we need, that, that, that. Historic, um, District Commission, we need, um, Historic District Commission, we need, or the study group, either one of those, you can pick. There's not a lot left here.
You can stop me with me.
Is that, are you studying?
I did do the study.
We have, it would have to be the commission, I think.
It says two. You can reach up to two reps on each one of those.
If we don't have one.
I must have lost track somewhere, because I have Carol on the Historic District, but I may have that wrong. And Bridgette on the Historic District Study Committee, both of those, is that right?
Carol was alternate for the Historic District Commission, not the study one.
Right.
And I can tell you that the study one is the active one of both of those committees. The study group is the active committee.
They, they do the study?
Well, there's, if we're, if they're asked to do studies, you do, but like Little Red came out of that committee. Things that, you know, and Montiel reads that committee, you know, lots of things can come out of that committee that are fun.
Is he fun? She said the.
The study committee is the planning committee, and the commission is kind of the regulatory.
Are you the Tory?
For that, is that, okay.
I can tell you.
Thank you, thank you. I would love the study.
Okay.
If that sounds.
And I can tell you the purpose of the Historic District Commission, the purpose of that is to oversee our single site. We have a single site with the Armory. That's the purpose of that group, is to oversee that site. We have to have it, as long as that site is active. But if, if the district grows or more added to it than.
Which is in the works.
Yes. So, that's coming. Okay.
And may I just just ask a question? You're going to be the regular committee member, and then I would be the alternate. I beg for that, correct?
For the.
Yes. Okay.
No.
For what? For the Historic District Study Commission?
This says two reps.
You said Historic District Commission as an alternative.
Okay.
Didn't put the study group on yours.
I'm just echoing what Bridgette.
Bridgette did.
Okay.
So the two spots on that are taken.
Okay. Sorry.
That's, no, that's, it's confusing.
What about Park Foundation?
That, that.
Is that old?
It's not, it's not on here, but the Park Foundation, and I've been on that since day one, they've never had a meeting, but I've been invited to. The city has asked several times, because we give the Park Foundation $20,000 every year for the APLAC.
If you asked me that question, that's through, Leland, do you remember the Park Foundation donation, or Art, excuse me, Art's city contribution to the Park Foundation is, does that go through 2030, maybe, or is it 2028?
Oh, I.
I'd have to check, but it's, it's soon. It's within the next five years.
So I think as long as we're giving the money, our rule is that then somebody needs to be assigned to that committee, so we could have it as a committee.
It's in our, our sheet.
Well, I don't know why, yeah. The Park Foundation, and we can have city reach out to them and say, hey, when you meet, you need to, so that would.
That, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You like Leslie, no?
What?
Okay. I think that one got lost, unfortunately.
It did. I think so.
So if somebody wants to be an alternate on that, Bridgette, you want to be an alternate on Park Foundation?
Sure.
Okay.
Love it.
Hey, Kevin. There's not many alternates, but I think we've used them all.
How about Dare?
Dare no longer.
No longer, okay.
So Kevin, would you like to be an alternate for NEMCOG?
I would love to.
Okay. Because nobody is. Okay, we, we've covered, we've, we've covered everything there, so we don't have to go back around. So I'm going to, I'll start, and I'm going to start with Danny's. And I want to get these right. So I move that councilperson Mitchell be appointed to, now I'm going to list the following. Alpena County Land Bank, NEMCOG, Alpena County Central Dispatch, Emergency Manager, Management Advisory Committee, and then as alternates to the Hunt team and to the River Center. His mandatory committees are Board of Review and Intergovernmental Council.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and support. Any discussion? Nope.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson. Motion to adjourn.
Danny, you want to take the next one?
Sure, I think I could do you.
You can do whoever you want.
I move that Mayor Johnson be appointed to the Retirement Board, the Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority, Huron Humane Society, and Target Alpena. Her alternates would be Alpena County Land Bank, Art Alpena, Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council, and the mandatories are Board of Review, Intergovernmental Council, and Election Commission.
So moved. So we have a motion by Mitchell, moved by Walcheck, Johnson's on the Retirement Board, Northeast Michigan Material Management Authority, Huron Humane Society, Target Alpena. My alternates are Alpena County Land Bank, Art Alpena, Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Committee. My mandatory, my mandatory ones are Board of Review, Intergovernmental Council, and the Election Commission.
As a mayor, she got seconded.
I should have seconded that. I wasn't realizing that you were making a motion as you read that thing. Sorry about that.
And I thought you did say. So motion by Danny, support by Carol. Go ahead.
Just want to clarify, do you still want to be called last in all of these, or was it just?
I just wanted Mayor Pro Tem. Just Mayor Pro Tem. If I don't request it, I'm, just go in your, your normal rotation.
Yeah, I bet it got ordered.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
And Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
May I make a motion for, I would be, I would do Bridgette's, but I'm too afraid to. May I agree Kevin's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. If I have this correct, I move that we appoint Kevin Carrier to Hunt, the Historic District Study Committee, Park Foundation. His alternate would be NEMCOG. His mandatory boards would be Board of Review and Intergovernmental Council.
That's right? Yes. And, and I'll support. So motion by Walcheck, support by Johnson, Carrier is on Hunt, Historic District Study Commission, Park Foundation, alternate is NEMCOG, mandatory is Board of Review and Intergovernmental Council. Any discussion? Leland?
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
And Councilmember Hollishead?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to have to. What was your third one? I have Brown.
I circled, I circled mine.
There you go. River City, Thunder Bay, National. Alternates is the district, and you're alternate for Art Alpena?
Oh, I'm not sure.
It's the River Board, because you're some alternate.
Okay. I'm, I'm.
I'm going to add that. Go ahead.
Oh, pardon me. I move that councilperson Carol Walcheck be appointed to the Brownfield Division, the River City, the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary with alternates in the Historic District Committee, Art Alpena, and mandatory Board of Review and Intergovernmental Council.
Okay, and can I just, so I think it's a Historic District Commission that Carol, she said committee, there's a difference.
Right. Thank you for correcting.
Could I, the City of Alpena Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment, just to have the minutes reflect that?
Thank you so much. I was writing, I can't write that fast.
You have this to write from? So I, I will second that. So the motion is for Walcheck to be appointed to the City of Alpena Brownfield Authority, Redevelopment, Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary, River Center Board, alternate is Historic District Commission, mandatory Board of Review, and Intergovernmental Council. Any discussion?
I'll second.
No, we already did.
I'm still shook up.
Go ahead, Leland.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson. All thank you.
So, can, Bill, help me here. I want to amend Kevin's and add him to the River Center as an alternate, because we don't have one. Do you want me just to make a brand-new motion with just that?
I'm just making a motion instead.
So a motion and add everything, all of it. Yeah.
Alternative on the River Center.
Never mind, yeah. I'm sorry, Kevin.
Yeah, he is the.
But no second.
Did we do it? Did we do it?
Forgot me.
Bridgette is left.
Ready for it.
One more.
Okay, Kevin, go ahead.
Like some motion for Bridgette Hollishead for the Historic District Study Committee, Art Alpena, and the City of Alpena Retirement Board. Her alternative is the Park, what are we calling that? I'm sorry.
Park Foundation.
Park Foundation. Alternative Park Foundation, mandatory is Board of Review and Intergovernmental Council.
And she is an alternate on County Dispatch and Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Correct, Bridgette? Was that a clean enough motion, though?
It is.
Okay, is there support?
We support.
Carol supported, so Carrier made the motion, Walcheck supported. The motion is Bridgette will be serving on Art Alpena Historic, Alpena Historic Study Committee, the Retirement Board, her alternate is County Dispatch, Emergency Management Advisory Committee, Park Foundation, mandatory is Board of Review and Intergovernmental Council. Any discussion? Leland?
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
That being all we have before the council this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Then we adjourn.
Mitchell?
Second.
Walcheck support. We are adjourned.
And we have that.